I'm calling to order the Wheatridge City Council meeting of March 25th, 2013. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the city clerk please take role?
Joyce J. Is your mic on?
Here.
No, Joyce J.
Joseph Demott. Mike Stites. George Pond.
Present.
Davis Reinhardt.
Here.
Kristy Davis. Bud Starker.
Here.
Tracy Langworthy.
We have one correction to the minutes and is there a motion to approve the minutes of March 11th, 2013?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Chaver?
Yeah, I have a, Mr. Starker pointed out a error in last month's, last city council meeting. And in the explanation of where the three absent council members were, I inadvertently wrote that Ms. Davis was in Washington DC and she was not, it was Mr. Starker. So that correction will be made.
Do you have a motion to approve was seconded by Mr. Reinhardt, any other changes to the minutes? Please poll the council. You do.
I'm sorry. Confused. I'm sorry, I missed.
I don't think you can change it.
You had to revote.
Revote, please. We all make mistakes.
Mine, I didn't touch it.
Now he didn't change it.
I didn't touch it. It doesn't, mine won't extend.
Did you clear the board yet now? Yeah, I tried.
Motion carries five to zero with councilmember Starker, Langworthy, and Reinhardt abstaining.
I thank you, we have one proclamation tonight, it's Child Abuse Prevention Month. I would ask the city clerk to please read the proclamation tonight.
This is our proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month, which is in April. Whereas every child deserves to grow up in a nurturing environment, free from harm and fear. Whereas all children do not receive appropriate care and many children become victims of abusive perpetrators. Whereas it is up to us as a community to work to end this through awareness and action. Whereas the city of Wheatridge and Jefferson County have dedicated individuals and organizations who work daily to counter the problem of child abuse and help parents obtain the assistance they need. Whereas our community is stronger when all citizens become aware of child abuse prevention and support parents in raising their children in a safe and nurturing environment. Whereas effective child abuse prevention programs such as Ralston House succeed because of partnership among families, social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Whereas all citizens, community agencies, faith organizations, and businesses will work to increase their efforts to support families. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of Wheatridge do hereby proclaim the month of April 2013 as the City of Wheatridge Child Abuse Prevention Month. And renew our commitment to prevent child abuse and learn what we can do to promote the safety and well-being of children. And in witness thereof on this 25th day of March 2013, signed by Mayor DeTulio.
Thank you.
Is there anyone, no one to receive it? Okay.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is citizen's right to speak. Citizen's right to speak is reserved for members of the public who wish to speak on any item that's not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed three minutes, others may donate their time to the speaker at the podium for a total of nine minutes. So if you hear for public comment, please step forward to the podium and spell your last name for the record and please state your address or your city. I will have the timer here on my computer and you have three minutes.
Nancy Snow, 11155 West 40th in Arfaire City. I would like to speak to you a night, which I do every so often about, I guess, say, open records, open meetings, communication with the public. Since I was in the council a long time ago, there've been a lot of changes, which I applaud. I hope there's no more secret meetings, you have taken several steps forward, you're now taking video of the planning commission. You added video of the study session, you're allowing us to speak at the study session. But I'd like to speak to you about one more thing, because I was sort of startled about an agenda item tonight. When you put out written notices, it really should give information to the public about what you're discussing. And item five reads, approving a fourth modification to 38th Avenue Corridor redevelopment plan. I have to say to you, there is absolutely no way the public would understand that that's a request for rebate of property taxes. It would have been so easy to have written that, request by the developer for rebate of property taxes on apparent townhomes at the corner of 38th and Depew, but it doesn't. And I, as you know, I know about this, I spoke last week, but I almost didn't come, because I just thought it was a motion to reintroduce the idea of tax increment financing. I didn't realize from the agenda item that it was on a specific property and a specific amount. So I guess I would ask whoever it is that writes the agendas to try to see if they make sense to the ordinary person, that for those of us who really do read our agendas, you would know what it's about. Thank you.
Thank you. Please spell your last name for the record.
Smith, S.M.I.T.H. Dr. Linda Smith, I live on 2844 Depew, and I have kind of three concerns. One is the restaurant that's going in has tapped its sewer into the domestic houses, sewer that runs up the alley instead of putting in a larger sewer pipe. I'm concerned that that may be an issue when you start actually having a lot of sewer going through it when the restaurant opens. The second is, it's very difficult to pull out on 29th and Depew because of the cars that are parked along the edge. And I think it could be solved by two things, two or three different ways. One, two car lengths on either side of Depew are, there's no parking. And that would allow you to actually look up both sides of the street. Right now, you have to actually pull halfway up into the street on 29th to actually see if their car is coming. And I think that's a real, a real problem. And I think we'll have to address it either by four-way stop if this doesn't work. This is a pretty inexpensive way to try to change it, because people will be parking there when it opens. And I think that needs to be addressed. And the other thing is, you know, we are the city of trees and if we have another storm or a few storms like we did last year, I'm concerned that, you know, maybe there's some way we can get some help with tree trimming or picking up, you know, limbs. Because it was pretty, pretty heavy last year and maybe the council could consider something like that, some kind of assistance with tree trimming.
Thank you. Please spell your last name for the record.
Sure. Kim Calomino, C.A.L.O.M.I.N.O., 4070 Dover Street. And I'm actually speaking to item five on the agenda, so I don't know if this is the appropriate time or if you'd like me to wait until then. The resolutions.
We'll have public comment under item five.
Will you? Okay, well then I will reserve my comments for then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else here for public comment, comment on any item that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the agenda, are there any changes to the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to public hearings and ordinances on second reading. Item one is council bill number 03-2013, I'm going to open the public hearing, Mr. Pond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council bill number 3-2013, an ordinance amending the cable television franchise agreement between the city of Wheatridge, Colorado and Comcast of Colorado 4 LLC to extend the term of the franchise. At issue, the city of Wheatridge's franchise agreement with Comcast expires on April 1st, 2013. An extension of the franchise agreement to December 31st, 2014 will allow the cities of Denver and Aurora to complete their franchise negotiations with Comcast, which would be in the best interest of the city of Wheatridge.
Move on to, will the city clerk please assign an ordinance number?
Yes, this will be ordinance number 1534.
Do you have any staff presentation beyond the executive summary?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, Mr. Mosley will give a brief staff report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Basically, we are operating under a current franchise agreement with Comcast that is scheduled to expire in April. We've been waiting on some of our larger metropolitan neighbors, mainly Denver and Aurora, to finish their Comcast negotiations for their franchises that are expected to expire as well. Those have not concluded yet, so we are asking for some more time to operate under our current agreement with Comcast to the end of 2014. So that way we have time for these other cities to finish their negotiations, so we can see what the new model agreement looks like. Basically, a lot of different cities finished their negotiations around the same time and kind of have used the same model agreement. So we're just waiting to see what the kind of new model is, so that we can negotiate with Comcast once those are done. So that's pretty much the end of it, we're just asking for your extension.
Thank you. Do we have anybody here from the public to speak on item number one? Seeing none, we'll move on to council discussion. Do you have any council questions or discussion? Close the public hearing and a motion's in order.
I move to approve council bill number 03-2013, an ordinance amending the cable television franchise agreement between the city of Wheatridge, Colorado and Comcast of Colorado 4 LLC to extend the term of the franchise on second reading and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second. We have a motion to approve item number one, it was seconded by Mr. Stites, please poll the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you, before we move on, can everybody here in the audience tonight in the back too? It's coming clear, okay, thank you. Item two is council bill number 04-2013, I'm going to open the public hearing, council member Demott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council bill number 04-2013, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 12390 West 44th Avenue from Agricultural 2 to Mixed Use Neighborhood, case number WZ12-11 Frisk.
Would the city clerk please assign an ordinance number?
This will be ordinance number 1535.
I thank you, if you're here tonight to speak on item two, please stand and raise your right hand, so I can swear you in. Do you swear to tell the truth in this matter? Thank you. Move on to the staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, for the record, Meredith Record, Wheatridge Community Development Department. Case number WZ12-11 is a request for approval of a zone change from Agricultural 2 to Mixed Use Neighborhood at 12390 West 44th Avenue. I'd like to enter into the record the case file and packet materials, zoning ordinance, comprehensive plan, the contents of this digital presentation.
Thank you.
The property is within the city of Wheatridge and all posting notification requirements have been met, therefore council does have jurisdiction to hear the case tonight. So this is a copy of an aerial photo taken in 2012, and you can see the property outlined in blue. 44th Avenue runs along its northern property line and it's located kind of midway between Vivian on the east and Wright Street on the west. And Ward Road comes in and dead ends right at the front of the property. This is that same aerial photo, but with a zoning overlay and all these different colors represent the different zonings in land uses in the area. Again, the property is outlined in blue and to the west and south, that greenish color stands for other agricultural 2 zone properties. Used primarily for single-family residential. To the east, we've got a gas station, which is noted, noted, noted in pink, Zone C1, and then other various commercial uses to the north and so on. I would point out that the applicants in this case do own the property at the northwest corner of Ward Road and so they are invested in the community in more ways than one with this proper, this project. This is a little bit closer view of the property, it's about 15,000 square feet in size and has a one-story, thousand-square-foot residence that was originally built in 1946. Since these folks have owned the property, they have done some improvements to convert it to accommodate a home occupation. And that would include installation of an accessible bathroom, a wheelchair ramp, and also some paving improvements. I would point out that there is an access easement that runs across the western portion of the property that provides access to the property to the south, and that is a house, and that will remain in perpetuity. And again, the curb cut to the property is directly across the intersection from Ward Road, the Ward Road stoplight. So taking a look at some of the attributes of the property, you can see in this image, I was looking southeast, you can see the front of the home and the paving improvements that they've done. A little bit closer picture of the structure, you can see again some of the handicap accommodations that they've made. This picture points to that access way to the south and the property owner has worked with that resident back there to make sure that that access has remained unencumbered, so that they have free movement back there. This is looking sort of along the frontage east of 44th Avenue, again you can see the stoplight and the entrance drive into the property. And then this is looking west. So the, oh, one last one, and this is the intersection to the north with Ward Road stoplight. The applicant is requesting the property to be rezoned from Agricultural 2 to Mixed Use Neighborhood. And generally, we like to see Mixed Use Neighborhood located along neighborhood main streets and at neighborhood commercial centers. It's to encourage medium-density residential development as well as some limited neighborhood types of serving commercial and retail uses. This slide is intended to show the differences just generally between the two zonings, the A2 and the MUN. Under the existing conditions, the A2 zoning can be used for single-family homes and some general farm operations. Under the MUN zoning, you also can have residential, but it would also allow some flexibility in application of maybe perhaps some live-work scenarios, or again, some neighborhood serving retail uses. Both the height restrictions in the commercial, in the MUN and the A2 are 35 feet. And at this point, the applicant is not proposing any site modifications, it's going to be as, used as is. However, if there were to be some additions or modifications to the structure, they would go through an administrative site plan review, which would include design standards to ensure quality development. Let's see, as far as the process goes, we had a neighborhood meeting on December 5th, we had four folks from the neighborhood in attendance. And a variety of discussion items, including the zone change process permitted and proposed use, uses, and then continued use of that existing access easement to the south. We went through our standard referral process and really no concerns were expressed from any of the agencies. Again, if this, the structure was scraped or expanded, we would go through a full referral process as part of that administrative review. Planning Commission did review this at a public hearing held on February 7th and recommended approval to council. I just want to talk briefly about the comprehensive plan. As you're aware, this is one of the documents, of course, that we go to when we're looking for a support or non-support of any sort of zone change. This is a little bit hard to see, but it's from the structure plan map from the, from envisioned Wheatridge. And it does designate this area as a commercial corridor, neighborhood buffer, and also, also a gateway into the city. I would also mention that the property is located within the I-70 Kipling corridor, urban renewal area. And both of those plans call for an improved mix of land uses in transitional areas. We think this will serve a great buffer for the neighborhood to the south and also the buffer from 44th Avenue. And we also feel that the property is currently underutilized and this will open up some more options for those land owners. So staff is giving a recommendation of approval for the following reasons. We feel that the zone change to Mixed Use Neighborhood is supported by both envisioned Wheatridge and the urban renewal plan. We feel like the MU- We feel like the M-U-N zoning is compatible with the surroundings and will serve as a neighborhood buffer, that there should be no negative impact on health, safety, or welfare, and that the property is currently utilized. And the zone change will allow the property owner to expand what is available under the zoning. So that concludes staff comments.
Thank you. We'll move on to a public comment. Do we have anybody here to speak on item number two from the public? Do we have the applicant to speak?
The applicants are in the audience. I don't know if they have anything to add, unless council has questions.
I let the record show the applicant declined to speak. Does council have any questions or comments? Ms. Langworthy?
Under the neighborhood meeting, there's a comment about the fifteen percent landscape coverage?
Yes. They are required to beef up the landscaping a little bit. I'm not exactly sure where they are on coverage, but we'd like to see a little bit more to meet the actual, the requirement for mixed use is fifteen percent. So we need to sit down and do an analysis with the applicant, see where we can beef that up a little bit.
Any other questions or comments? Close the public hearing and a motion's in order.
Thank you. I move to approve council bill number zero-four-two thousand thirteen, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at one-two-three-nine-zero West Forty-Fourth Avenue from Agricultural Two to Mixed Juice Neighborhood on second reading and that it take effect fifteen days after final publication for the following reasons. City council has conducted a proper public hearing meeting. All public notice requirements as required by section twenty-six-one-oh-nine of the Code of Laws. The required rezoning has been reviewed by the Planning Commission, which has forwarded its recommendation. The requested rezoning has been found to comply with the criteria for review in section twenty-six-one-twelve-dash-E of the Code of Laws. And the property is currently underutilized, and the zone change will increase the permitted uses of the site.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number two. It was seconded by Ms. Langworthy. Discussion on the main motion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight-zero.
Thank you. Congratulations. We'll move on to item number three, which is resolution eleven dash two thousand thirteen. I'm going to open the public hearing. Mr. Demott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number eleven-two thousand thirteen. A resolution approving a two-lot subdivision plat with a right-of-way dedication for properties owned Agricultural One located at forty-nine-hundred Robb Street, case number MS thirteen dash zero-one Hawn.
If you're here to speak on item number three, please stand, so I can swear you in. Do you swear to tell the truth in this matter? Thank you. Move on to staff presentation.
Once again, for the record, Meredith Record Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. Case number MS twelve dash oh-three is a request for approval of a two-lot subdivision on property zoned A-one at forty-nine-hundred Robb Street. I'd like to enter into the record the subdivision regulations, zoning ordinance, case file and packet materials, and the contents of this digital presentation.
Thank you.
The property has been posted and published, and therefore, city council has jurisdiction to hear this request this evening. Again, the request is to subdivide the property outlined in red into two pieces, to separate the vacant portion on the east from the area where the existing houses. You can see Robb Street runs along the western property line, and the property is relatively deep and narrow with about three-point-nine acres, excuse me, three-point-oh-nine acres. There is an existing single-family home that you can see at the front of the property that would be on the western side. That, we've got a couple different pieces of information. The assessor's record says it was built in nineteen twelve. The applicant and owner indicates it's a little bit older than that, having been built in the early eighteen-nineties. It's a brick construction, and the exterior does remain in good condition with the original architectural features of the property. So again, here we're looking at the site again with the zoning overlay on it. You can see the property in question and some of the other properties in the area, especially on the west side of Robb Street. All are colored green. That stands for Agricultural One. And kind of a mixed area to both the south and north of the property in the gray color are office warehouse buildings. So definitely an area that has transitioned from the farming to more commercial. Further to the east, we've got some Commercial One and some various other industrially-zoned properties to the south. There are a couple ditch irrigation, or irrigation-ditch laterals that cross, kind of catty-corner across the property. And located behind the house are some various agricultural outbuildings, like a chicken coop and an old horse stable. Let's see, let's go ahead and take, pick a look at slides. So this slide was taken on Robb Street looking north. You can see where the fence kind of juts out, where I've got the arrow pointed to is where the property is located, and I'll get into that in a little bit. This is the northern portion of the property looking east. And now we've got the house in the picture and some really nice old trees. Again, still looking east at this, kind of the southern portion. There is a pretty hefty grade change between the house location and the southeast corner of the property of about forty feet. And this is the eastern kind of pasture area. And this is the view from the industrial park to the south, kind of looking back towards the house. And you can see the grade change and where all those cattails are, is where the ditches flow. So what you're looking at tonight is a two-page subdivision. This is the first page of that, what I like to call the declaration page. It's got things like legal descriptions and zoning notes, and talks about utilities a little bit with all the signature blocks. So really, the heart and soul of the subdivision is the second page, which shows how the property is going to be divided. Lot one, which is in the northwest corner of the property, is the lot that will contain the existing house and those outbuildings. The minimum lot size for A-one zone properties is one acre with a hundred-and-forty feet of lot width, and that's exactly what the house lot is shown as. The rest of the vacant property, which is lot two, has about two acres in size. And it also does meet the minimums of the lot width and so on for the A-one zone district. As part of our review, we always look at street width, and of course, you can see from that picture we had where the street jutted out. So the applicant has agreed to a thirty-foot dedication for Robb Streets to make that even with properties to both the north and south. And let's see, the property owner at this time does not have any plans for redevelopment of that second lot. There's kind of some, some sort of monumental challenges with the grade change and so on. But they are interested in separating it from the house lot. And staff does conclude that the proposed consolidation plat is compliant with the A-one zone district regulations and the subdivision regulations. Again, we went through our standard referral process. All responding agencies are already serving the property with the house. That would be lot one. If any new development on lot two would occur, we would go back through the process and solicit input from the districts on improvements. Public Works is requesting a thirty-foot right-of-way dedication with some paving, and the applicant has agreed to that. I would note that Planning Commission heard this case on February twenty-first and did give a recommendation of approval. And that is staff's recommendation as well, for the reasons, it is consistent with the Article Four, the zoning code. All agencies can serve the property, and it's also consistent with the A-one zone district regulations. So again, that concludes staff comments, and I would be open for questions.
Thank you. Is the applicant here to speak? Do you have anything to say tonight, or? Move on to the public. Do we have anybody here to speak on item number three from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to council discussion. Questions or comments from council?
Mr. Reinhardt?
Just one, would you just clarify what the requirement would have been for frontage on the main street? How much space?
Let me go to, are you talking lot width, Mr. Reinhardt?
Yes, I am talking lot width.
Okay. So the requirement is for a hundred and feet, a hundred-and-forty feet of lot width. On the first lot, we measure it straight across the frontage. Because this is a flag lot and back, we actually measure it at the front property line, which is this area right in here.
Thank you, that was, that's ours.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Davis?
I have just a quick question, based off of the notes from the meeting, the public hearing at the meeting. They were talking about the designation, historical designation and an application there, because it sounds like the intent is to have a smaller lot to, you know, preserve the home. Is there any application being entered? Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Dahl?
It's just that there's going to be testimony from the applicant. He really needs to be on the record.
Oh, please step forward and give your answer on the mic, please. The question you just answered, would you mind answering it in the mic for the record? And please spell your last name for the record.
I guess it's Hawn, H-A-W-N.
First name?
Tom.
Tom, and then please answer her question again on the, Chris, do you want to ask your question again?
Yeah, so I guess my question again was just where you are in the historical designation and moving forward with that application.
Paperwork has been completed on that. It just hasn't been turned in yet. We weren't sure at what stage that should be. I didn't want to do that before the separation of the land, in case that had some impact on that, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Hawn? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jay?
This purely for my clarification. On the proposed subdivision plat, the statement is made, the installa- Let me read the whole paragraph. A thirty-foot right-of-way dedication labeled as Track A will be required for Robb Street. The installation of curb, gutter, and sidewalk will not be required, but will need to be paved subsequent to plat approval. Now, go ahead.
The way our public improvements requirements are laid out in the subdivision regulations, and the city code for that matter, there are certain trigger points that then would require the installation of curb, gutter, and sidewalk. In this situation, Robb Street narrows down quite, quite a bit. But they're not really proposing any new development that requires drainage reports or anything. A lot of times, you want to see curb and gutter grow in to help facilitate the drainage around the property. So in this case, they just need to do the paving.
The property owner would do the paving?
The property owner would be responsible for that.
The city would not?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Close the public hearing and a motion's in order.
I move to approve resolution number eleven-two thousand thirteen, a resolution approving a two-lot subdivision plat with right-of-way dedication for properties owned Agricultural One located at forty-nine-hundred Robb Street for the following reasons. City council has conducted a proper public hearing, meeting all public notice requirements as required by section twenty-six-one-oh-nine and twenty-six-four-oh-seven of the Code of Laws. The requested subdivision has been reviewed by the Planning Commission, which has forwarded its recommendation. And the subdivision plat has been found in compliance with Article Four of Chapter Twenty-Six of the Code of Laws.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number four. It was seconded by, oh, three. It was seconded by Mr. Starker. Discussion on the main motion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight-zero. Was that seconded by Mr. Starker or Mr. Pond?
Mr. Starker. Thank you. Congratulations. The next item on the agenda is ordinance is on first reading. The purpose of first reading is to inform the public of the date and time of the public hearing. Public comment is not allowed on first reading per council rules, but amendments are allowed on first reading. Item four is council bill oh-seven dash two thousand thirteen. Mr. Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce council bill number oh-seven-two thousand thirteen, an ordinance extending the temporary moratorium on the submission, acceptance, processing, and approval of applications for a permit or license for any marijuana establishment or marijuana club. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve council bill number oh-seven-two thousand thirteen, an ordinance extending the temporary moratorium on the submission, acceptance, processing, and approval of any application for a city permit or license to operate a marijuana establishment or marijuana club on first reading at scheduled a public hearing for April eighth, two thousand thirteen, at seven PM in the city council chambers.
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number four, was seconded by Mr. Reinhardt. Mr. Dahl, did you want to update the council again on that change about medical marijuana versus regular marijuana?
Oh, yes, thank you. There was a question asked after last week's meeting, or last, the last regular meeting you had. You adopted emergency moratorium, and as council knows, those are only good for ninety days. It's expected that this moratorium would need to last longer until we've seen the state act on its regulations. And as you now see, the legislature's wrestling with the sixty, or one-hundred-and-sixty-eight page, I think, recommendation from its task force, so it may be a while. In any event, because of that moratorium, in my opinion, needed to extend longer. I promised council I'd just bring forward a regular ordinance to extend that moratorium, and this is that ordinance, this first reading. I got a question after the emergency ordinance was introduced and adopted about whether this moratorium applies at all to medical marijuana dispensaries or the grow operations associated with them, and it does not. And I've made that clear in the text of the ordinances in front of you. So I wanted to make certain that you knew that we've got some existing medical marijuana dispensaries and associated grow operations, and this moratorium does not affect them. Thank you.
Thank you. Please poll the council on the main motion.
Motion carries eight-zero.
Before we move on to item number five, Mr. Reinhardt?
Yes, I'll be recusing myself from item number five. I've done work on this project for the owner, and I anticipate doing work on it again in the future.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item five, which is resolution number twelve dash two thousand three. Mr. Starker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number five is resolution number twelve dash two thousand thirteen. A resolution approving a fourth modification to the Thirty-eighth Avenue Corridor Redevelopment Plan. Pardon me. At issue in late two thousand twelve, the city received a tax increment financing, TIF, agreement application from Richard Onslager, the principal of Crosswire Investments, Crosswire for the Perrins Row Townhouse Development of up to twenty-nine townhomes in the Thirty-eighth Avenue Corridor Redevelopment Plan area located at fifty-seven-sixty West Thirty-eighth Avenue. Question in this matter, should the city council consider approving a fourth modification to the plan allowing for renewal Wheat Ridge to enter into a TIF agreement with Crosswire Investments Incorporated?
Thank you. We'll move on to a staff presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Steve Art, the Economic Development and Urban Renewal Manager for the city. Before you tonight is a request to do the fourth modification to the Thirty-eighth Avenue Corridor Reed Development Plan. The genesis behind that is an application that was received by renewal Wheat Ridge late last year, about October of last year, from Crosswire Investments for the purpose of constructing up to twenty-nine brand-new townhouses on a parcel on Thirty-eighth Avenue at Depew Street. I'm not going to define those units right now, because in the audience tonight is Richard Onslager from Crosswire Developments. He knows those units individually better than I will, so I'll let him explain those units. But to give you some background on the site, the site has been empty for about the last fourteen years. Prior to that, it contained a gas station. When that gas station closed around nineteen ninety, it ceased operations. It was identified to have a underwater fuel tank. That fuel tank was safely removed from the ground, and the site was remediated. Over the past fourteen years, there's been numerous development opportunities on the site there. But none of those opportunities, while approved by either the city council or the Planning Commission, were approved, never went forward due to financial implications on building that project. There just wasn't any money in the project for it to move forward. The site was rezoned to Mixed Use Neighborhood since then. The site is within the Thirty-eighth Avenue Redevelopment Plan area, and the plan does have a stated objective that it will help not only retail, but the development of residential along there to make it a fully functioning corridor in the future that will make a balanced mix of residential, retail, and services to businesses. The plan authorizes renewal Wheat Ridge, the authorizing- The plan authorizes Renewal Wheat Ridge, the authorizing body of the Urban Renewal Authority, to enter into redevelopment activities along the corridor, and one of those redevelopment activities is the placement of public infrastructure. And that's what a future agreement, that would, if the plan is modified, that Renewal Wheat Ridge would enter into with Crosswire Development for the placement of infrastructure into the ground along there. That could include water, sewage, access points. There could also include modifications to the building to, to enhance its beauty for the public realm. With that incentive package that was requested from Crosswire Development, because the property at that time had many aspects to it that made it undevelopable. The charter restrictions did not allow for adequate height and densities to make the project financially viable. The site suffered from adjacency to aging residential and retail. The downturn in the natural, national development of the, of the marketplace, as well as market conditions, and Wheat Ridge made the project unfeasible. The value of property in this part of Denver metro area is twenty to thirty dollars per square foot less than in our neighboring areas such as the West Highlands, and Wheat Ridge development standards drive up development costs. So the project came to us asking for some TIF, some tax increment financing support. For those of you who are unaware of tax increment financing, it is really, we have a base level of tax increment, and it takes what that, what it is currently today, and after the project is complete, it should have a higher property tax value. That area between what it is now and what it is at the end of the project, that is the increment. And that is the area of the, the developers asking for some assistance to help build this project. But in order for Renewal Wheat Ridge to pass through this agreement with a developer, we must modify the plan as per ordinance by redevelopment law. The project has gone forward to Renewal Wheat Ridge twice. The first time was just a basic concept of the plan and a pro forma. At that meeting, they asked that we take a third-party independent party to review the pro forma and give us their analysis. We did hire out a company, Gruen &amp; Gruen, to do an analysis of the site, and the analysis of the site came back that said, yes, in order for this project to move forward, there is going to have to be some sort of public assistance into this project. Renewal Wheat Ridge, at their most recent meeting, in a five-to-two vote, agreed in concept to an agreement with Crosswire. It will still go back to the board for its full approval at a future date. That would, Crosswire would receive for the first seven years of the project eighty percent of the property tax that would be generated, so years one through seven. And then years eight through twenty, they would receive, it would scale down to fifty-five percent of that tax increment. That would mean the Urban Renewal Authority would receive forty-five percent of it, and those monies would be able to used in other projects throughout the city, throughout the, excuse me, throughout the agency project area on the Thirty-Eighth Avenue Corridor Plan. Staff recommends moving forward with this modification of this plan for the following reason. The project will add new market rate residential units along Thirty-Eighth Avenue. This is the first new development. I've looked back through records. I can't find the last time between Wadsworth and Sheridan that some new housing development did occur along there, so it'll spur that new development along there. The new residents will create additional sales tax for the city of Wheat Ridge, so those new twenty-six units will, if we take a modifier of about two-point-seven people per units, that's about sixty people that are going to be shopping locally in our restaurants and our grocery stores and creating sales tax. The product, project, we hope, will act as a catalyst for other development on Thirty-Eighth Avenue and that residential around that neighborhood. The project will create additional property tax over time for the city of Wheat Ridge and the taxing agencies. And the project will remove Blight in, and, which is the object of the Renewal Wheat Ridge Board. In the audience today, I said, was Richard Onslager. I'm going to invite him forward to talk about the specific units and also from Newtown Builders. So while Richard is the master developer, the builder of the homes will be Newtown Builders, and Gene Myers is in the audience. And if the council doesn't have any specific questions for me right now, I'd like to invite them up to make a comment.
Mr. Art, could you address the two comments that are made at the study session? One was the negotiations with the Wheat Ridge Fire Department on them not taking any tax increment, and also the idea of some of these projects that, that's being owner-occupied because we have a high rental rate in the city of Wheat Ridge. Do you have any feedback on that?
We did approach the Wheat Ridge Fire District, and Steve Gillespie, the chief of the fire district, is here, and he can certainly comment on their talks within, in their board. As we said, it's, we're starting negotiations with all those taxing entities. I would certainly want the developer, both Richard and Gene, to address the, the owner occupancy of those units and, and tell you what their feelings are towards those. Thank you.
So please step forward and spell your last name for the record.
My name is Richard Onslager. It's O-N-E-S as in Sam, L-A-G-E-R. Thank you for your time this evening. It was a chance to present, tell you a little bit about this project. Just a quick history. I'm going to try to keep my comments brief, and then we're going to have Gene, who's the actual home builder, can give you some more specifics on it. And then I know there's a lot of questions on the math or the deal or whatever, and I'm happy to answer those at any time. I've owned this piece of property for over ten years. We originally bought it with the intention of putting a convenience store on the property. We determined that probably wasn't the best use for the property at that time, and certainly wasn't what the city was looking for. We actually had a discussion one time of doing a convenience store, laundromat and affordable apartment units on the second floor. And boy, I found out pretty quick how touchy the city was about, about rental units at the time and learned what the motivation was for owner-occupied homes. We put together a project, I've lost track of the time, Meredith may remember, but probably about seven years ago, to do a mixed-use project, about eight thousand square feet of retail and twenty residential units. Eight condominiums on the second floor above the retail and twelve townhomes. We were never, never able to move forward with that project primarily because we couldn't get people to pay the rents we needed for the eight thousand square feet. There's just not enough demand for retail and new retail along Thirty-Eighth Avenue. There's a lot of vacant space, and there's not a lot of spending power. And there weren't enough tenants looking to spend the money that you needed to justify new construction. So we tabled that, just let it sit for a while, and just kind of been sitting there waiting for an opportunity. And about six months ago, we introduced Newtown Builders, and we started talking about the prospect of a completely residential project. You know, prior to that, having participated in some of the Wheat Ridge Corridor meetings, particularly in the striping and the relaning or changing the lanes on Thirty-Eighth Avenue, listened a lot to what people were saying and what the, the consultants were saying. And it really became apparent to me, I should have realized it sooner, but, you know, retail follows residential, and retail looks for the rooftops. And what the Thirty-Eighth Avenue Corridor really needs right now is, is more residential and a little more spending power if you want to attract the type of tenants or a type of retail that you want to get to, to activate the corridor. So that, that brought us up to the period of time where we sat down with Newtown and started looking at the math and trying to figure out what could be built there and what could be, more importantly, what could be sold there. The biggest challenge we had is, as I believe Steve mentioned, is that there's been no new construction of homes for the most part in Wheat Ridge, and certainly in this area. So as we started looking for comparables, it was pretty difficult to ascertain exactly what we could, we could sell these homes for. We had to cast a pretty wide net. We had to make some pretty big assumptions, some leaps of faith, as we've called it. But really focusing in on the buyers who are being priced out of Berkeley and West Highlands. It's just simply too expensive for, for many buyers anymore. And our, our big strategy or vision is that with the right price point, people who've been priced out of there, we can get them to continue to move west across Sheridan and into Wheat Ridge, and that's the, kind of the, the big, the big picture of it. We, we started with, I think, with zoning. We could accommodate twenty-nine units. As we got into a little more particulars in terms of planning the site, fire code, some state statutes on, on different things with accessibility, we've settled in at twenty-six units now. As I said, I'm going to have Gene come up here in a minute and tell you a little bit about Newtown and about their, about their product, but we are extremely lucky. I am, as a developer, and you all, as a city, to have a, a home builders respected as Newtown interested in this project. I think, I know there've been several people who've already contacted the city, other developers that have heard that Newtown might be building over here, and they're starting to think that they should look in this area too. So I think that notion of catalyst is already starting to kick in. The, the TIF request came about, you've, you've received a lot of information probably, and we met with Urban Renewal on the, the basic math of the project. But what we did is we really started at the endpoint, was with the consumer in mind, said, what, what can we sell this product for? And what, what do we think that the homes would sell for? And then working backwards from there, that drives what a builder, in this case Newtown, can pay for the lot. So then it's very simple. We take our math of the, the twenty-six lots that, that we'll sell to Gene over time, assuming that, that the first takedown of lots is successful and people buy, buy his homes. And that's our, that's our income, that's our revenue, potential revenue over the course of two years or so. And then we look at our basis in the land or what the land's worth and what our improvement costs are. And pretty simple to look at the roughly half a million dollars that we're spending on the, the land, land improvements, and add our basis into the land. Actually, our basis in the land is higher than the four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars that we've used in the, in the Gruen &amp; Gruen analysis, the number they came up with. But that's just because we bought the property a long time ago, and we spent a lot of money on a plan that, that didn't move forward. So that's just unfortunately our problem. That's not, that's not anyone else's problem. But that, that works out to be, excuse me, a, a pretty thin return if the project goes forward. So we started looking at ways to enhance it. I may have to get a glass of water here in a minute. And settled on the TIF as a, as a viable option. The way we've structured this and the way our request is, I'm going to make sure, I, I know it's been covered, but I'm going to be very clear about it, is that we're, we're not asking the city to guarantee anything, to commit anything, to invest a single dollar. We're actually putting all the money up front. So we're taking a piece of land as a piece of raw material, and we're spending a half million dollars in improvements. That land is now pretty much committed to building these types of homes. So if those homes don't sell, my half million dollars in land improvements are somewhat limited in value because we're putting quite a bit of detail in there for these types of home lots. So we're committing a million dollars, and what we're asking is that if the project's successful, that we share in the incremental tax revenue. So again, the city's not putting any money, investing up front. There's no obligation to pay us anything if, if the project doesn't move forward. We're carrying all the risk, but we're willing to do that for an adequate return. Steve had mentioned the third-party company that you all hired, Gruen &amp; Gruen, did a study and concurred really with, with all of our math in terms of what we think the units can sell for, what a reasonable return for an investor to expect. They pretty much verified everything that we covered, and I think, I think they did a fair job with it. I think with that, I'm going to introduce Gene from Newtown. He can give you a quick overview on, on their history and some of the projects of what they've built, and then we can answer questions then, or any particular questions you want me to answer right now, or if you'd like to wait.
Go ahead and keep going. We'll take, we'll go through the presentation, then we'll come back. Please spell your last name for the record.
I'm Gene Myers, M-Y-E-R-S. And a lot of people misspell it. Thanks for asking. Well, my job here, let me see if I can get this to come up on the screen. I have a blank screen. Keep talking. Phil? Okay, well, Richard, great job. That was the first time I've heard his whole story, going back his ten years, so I learned about as much from that as you did. I'll just start, and we'll catch up with the slides later, but I'm one of the owners of Newtown Builders. We're a Denver-based builder. Our offices are down at roughly Fifteenth and Platt Street in Denver. Come right down, Twenty-Ninth, right down here to, to the hall. And, let's see if we need to hit Ctrl or Delete here.
Do we know which password we're using? Can you scream it out?
Oh, it is?
So is this going to be in the thumb drive? Is that where it's at?
No, it should be up here on the desk.
Have you got it with you?
Let's try that. I do have a bit. Sorry about that. So we are a Denver-based local builder. Our current projects are in Stapleton, Central Park rows, and those row homes are the basis for the row homes that we will build here on Perrin's Row. We also build two single-family series in Stapleton, the Solaris Single Family and the Haven Single Family, Challenge Reach Green Tree Collection in Aurora, and the Castlewood Ranch Green Tree Collection in Castle Rock. Who is Newtown Builders? Well, we are a builder that focuses on mixed-use, mixed-income, age-diverse and environmentally responsible homes and neighborhoods. We like locations in which we're part of a real neighborhood for a variety of uses, and Perrin's Row is perfect for us. In a lot of cases, we're in a new neighborhood, such as Stapleton, where they're trying to create a real neighborhood. In this case, we get to come into a real neighborhood, and so we're very excited about being here in Wheat Ridge. Mixed income, most of our projects are market rate developments. However, we are Denver's largest for-sale affordable housing builder, meeting Denver's affordable housing requirements. Age diverse, our single-family homes range in appeal from young families to empty nesters. And our townhomes, and we expect this to be true on Thirty-Eighth, our townhomes appeal primarily to couples, mid-twenty's to mid-thirties. Less so, but next in order would be singles, often single women. Then next would be single parents, and then we do have families with children occasionally. We're environmentally responsible. We build all of our homes with Colorado Beetlekill lumber. We're an Energy Star builder. And in December twenty-twelve, we were nationally given the Green Home of the Year by Green Builder Magazine for our zero-energy homes at Stapleton. Why are we interested in Wheat Ridge? Well, we were attracted to the, the site partially because of the investment that you've made in Thirty-Eighth Avenue. It was apparent to us that the city cared about what was going to happen in this corridor, and it looked like the kind of place that might work for us. The overlay zone was also very attractive because it reduced our entitlement risk, the cost of entitlement and the potential delays related to entitlements. And then finally, and this is where we're a little bit of a pioneer, but we believe that the market is ready to jump Sheridan, primarily because of the appeal that you've created on Thirty-Eighth and the high costs east of Sheridan. What do we envision for Perrin's Row? Townhomes approximately eleven hundred square feet to fifteen hundred square feet. They'll be three-story units. The way I describe them is the cars live on the first floor, the people live on the second, and they sleep on the third. That's generally how our, our floor plans work. We have not yet determined our pricing, and I'll be honest with you, it's a little difficult when you don't have ready comparables in the neighborhood. So we have done a lot of research on what's happened to the east. We've done a lot of MLS research or multiple listing service on resale, and we've taken a shot here at what we, we think we'll be able to sell these at. And frankly, that was the basis on which we negotiated the lot price with Richard. And that's, that lot price is probably why he's asking you for some help. We, we anticipate needing to price well below similar homes east of Sheridan. In some cases, those homes are going for two-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred dollars per square foot. We don't see that happening on Thirty-Eighth at least right away. We are somewhat pioneering in the neighborhood, and we foresee our pricing in the, in the two-hundreds, well below three-hundred thousand dollars. Thank you for setting the table for our new development. This is actually, that's actually a real picture of a, a real building of our Stapleton townhomes. And this is generally the design that we plan to bring into Wheat Ridge. So thank you very much.
I can answer any questions, or I might grab Gene up here if there's...
What we're going to do is move on to public comment, then we'll come back around for council, council discussion.
Okay.
Thank you. So if we're here to speak on item number five, please step forward and form a line behind the podium, and please spell your last name for the record on item number five, and we'll go from there. Please state your last name and spell your last name, and then your city or your address.
My last name is Peck, P-E-C-K. I'm from Lakewood. I represent tonight a group of investors similar to what has just been here at the podium. We are concerned, as he is concerned, about the pricing of the developments, the use of financing, and we're interested in TIF as well. Is 38th Avenue, in the council's opinion right now, going to support other applications for this type of financing along that route under the similar circumstances? Is this only going to be a precedent?
You know, that question is, you're going to have to ask the council that. Tonight, as we're talking about this project on item number five, so if you have any questions about future projects, I would recommend you talk to Steve Art and/or our city manager.
Are there norm standards, standards and criteria available to the public regarding the council's use of TIF in perhaps this particular type of project?
Each project is unique.
Thank you.
Urban renewal does, urban renewal makes recommendations to city council.
Nancy Snow, 11155 West 40th.
Please spell your last name for the record.
Oh, come on, Snow, S-N-O-W. I'm here again. The project looks very nice. His property is very well-developed out in Stapleton, so I'm speaking tonight strictly about the rebate of property taxes, about which I am very, very concerned. And object, I guess I would say. We have usually considered in this city that you would give a rebate of property taxes because that, and, and because you were going to get more sales tax. The city was going to get some more money. I'm sure when I was on the council, I think I voted for something at Applewood. So this one kind of surprises me. There's no commercial here. I remember when this first came in, and the first time, when Mr. Onslager bought the property, and he was concerned that our zoning ordinance didn't allow to mix uses. And believe it or not, the city wrote a whole new ordinance called "mix-use" for this property, and now here it is tonight, with no commercial. So the city's not going to get any money out of that, other than the tiny, tiny bit of property tax we always get. The other thing that really concerns me, not only is it not commercial, which is what I thought you were trying to get on West 38th Avenue, but it also is getting what we don't want. We did the neighborhood revitalization study that asked basically more single-family homes, less rentals. I noticed there was a question asked and not answered, I think, about whether anybody can do anything to see that these properties don't end up as rentals. I would think they would on 38th Avenue, myself. I mean, I'm not a developer, but I think you may get multifamily housing, which is not exactly what we originally wanted. The other thing that I really object to is such an unfair process to take all of the property tax. I don't think people at home all understand what urban renewal is, that the city Urban Renewal Authority takes all the property tax that ordinarily goes to the Jefferson County School District. All the property tax that goes to Jefferson County, all of it that goes to the sewer district, all of it that would go to a water district, and all of it that would go to the fire district. Now apparently, there's some little dickering behind the scenes that perhaps the fire district would get some money from urban renewal, which is nice, but not fair to all the other entities like Jefferson County School District. And I think it's especially upsetting that they're asking for all the money for the whole 20 years. I mean, in that length of time, sometimes properties have to be demolished. Now, all of it isn't going to the developer, but all of it, in this proposal tonight, if I'm wrong, please correct me, I think it's all going to urban renewal, now called Renewal Wheat Ridge. And I don't like the assumption, by the way, it's a small thing, but it's a big fight all over the United States and in Colorado, that first you say the land is blighted. It's not blighted, it's a piece of vacant land. There are lawsuits all over Colorado and all over the United States because they say the land is blighted in order to do this. But the biggest problem here is, he has said to you, the property is not feasible without getting some money back from the city. And I will say, the city hired, or somebody hired a company to analyze what that meant. And I hope you all have it in front of you, I know people at home don't, but basically, he says it's not, the property owner says it's not financially feasible unless he gets a subsidy. And would you please look at page two with some very complicated language about how they study how feasible the product is made by comparing the residual land use to the reservation price set by the landowner. In English, more understandable to the rest of us, the property analyzes what the property's really worth based on the cost to build it, and the sales prices, and then compare that to something called the reservation price by the landowner. And what that is, is basically, the landowner says, this is how much money I want, you know, whether it's worth it or not. And so stop for a minute and understand that there's like 16 pages of analysis, but in there, there is no analysis of what I call a real assessed, not assessed value, a real value of what this property might sell for on the market. It's simply compared to what he wants. But though you go back again to page two at the bottom, this analysis basically said the property's worth about $450,000, and he wants $650,000. So you can find that on pages two, you can find it in a chart on the top of page 10, how they figure this. They came down to a more precise figure of $447,000. And then, please read the first paragraph after the table that says, "If the developer would accept the real value of the land, $447,000, as his land equity, his net cash flow would be $122,000 with a 12% internal rate of renew, of return, and the builder would also get his 10% margin." Now, but the, the developer wants us, the city, to give him the $203,000 he's not making. Now, I don't know about you, but many people here and at home invest in land and the stock market, and you all know what happens then, how many people invested, and you didn't get what you expected. And I think he kind of said that tonight. I don't know what he paid for it, but obviously, he's not getting the amount he would like. But if he would give that, or put that into the pot for the amount that this study says, he would make money. Now, at the bottom of all of this, I want to read one thing, and I hope you're considering it, both on page two and page 10, this is what it says. If the present market conditions in real estate do not support as high a land value as that saw by the landowner, a subsidy is needed. If this is the case, there are three options. Wait to commence development until the market conditions and the real estate economics improve to support the land value. Two, wait until the landowner reduces the reservation price, in other words, the money he wants. Or three, subsidize, subsidize the development. And I kind of find it offensive that we don't have much analysis of that. The urban renewal jumped right to the, we got to help this guy, we have to give him money so he gets the amount of money he wants. I hope you're going to do that for everybody. I, I mean, I hope everybody who builds in the city from now on says, I don't want to pay my property tax because I can make more money if you put this into urban renewal. I don't think that's a very, very good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Please spell your last name for the record.
Michael Snow. Is this on? Michael Snow, I live at 3850 Carr Street, last name Snow, S-N-O-W. A lot of you guys remember me, of course. So I, I didn't want to try to repeat anything that's already been said, and you'll hear several other points. But I want to talk about, and just, I guess, recognize what everybody's trying to do here, and that is to revitalize our city and to revitalize 38th Avenue. I've been very actively involved myself as a 38th Avenue Revitalization Committee member, so I'm aware of the interest we have there, and the efforts that have been made and are still being made. Those efforts have been to create a sense of community there, to help revitalize the retail and restaurants and the business interests there, but also to make it an attractive place to be, a place you'd want to walk and bike, visit your restaurants, commune with one another, and so forth. And I think what's been done so far has been very, very commendable. We've had a lot of progress because of it. We've seen some new restaurants come in, we've seen some storefronts being rebuilt, exactly the kind of thing we want to see. But the most important thing that's happened there is what we, you don't see on the storefront, but that we've been building community where people actually want to engage with one another. And because of that, people are coming to Wheat Ridge. So we're becoming more of a tra, more attractive of a community for people who want to cross the street from Sheridan, where we know there's communities we all kind of envy, very strong, very vibrant, a lot of families, the businesses are doing well, very competitive in that nature. And they're starting to come across the street now, recognizing that there is some community in Wheat Ridge. But what I want to point out here is I think we are actually putting the cart before the horse. I think there's a reason that this property is not quite where it needs to be to be an attractive development opportunity. If it were, it would be that there's enough interest, or there's enough demand for the houses, the thousands of, of houses that surround this area, that the overflow would be interested in living in a place like 38th Avenue. But we're not there yet. And I think it's a mistake for us to think that building apartments will somehow bring more people to Wheat Ridge. And although these are very, I, I think, very attractive, it looks as though a lot of efforts have been made to make these attractive units, the fact that we don't really have that demand, to me, just means there are going to be apartments that are rentals, and that is exactly contrary to what we are trying to change for the city of Wheat Ridge. The other thing is the precedence, and this has been mentioned, the precedence it sets to say, we're going to take away from the other entities that our community depends on, we're going to take away those taxes just to make somebody profit, and in a situation that I do not believe will really, truly spur the revitalization of this corridor or the community. We will still have thousands of homes that also don't have the, the demand that they need to raise their property values. So I think we're doing the wrong thing at the wrong time. And if it's not quite the right time for this property to be developed as a retail, as a residential location, then it's just not the right time. And it's not the place for council to say, this one property owner should somehow benefit from the property taxes, when nobody else can. If that's the case, we should actually be talking to property owners, or people who would be considering moving to the area, who would be more likely to buy a home, a freestanding home with a yard and a place to park, a place to grow things, and let your dog and your children run, run around. We should be offering some type of an incentive to them, and we are. We're doing that by creating an environment that is welcoming. But an environment with some rental units, which I just am convinced are rental units, doesn't actually bring anybody here. So I think we're, we're kind of missing, I, I really commend everybody for what, the ideas behind this and what we want out of it, and for the creativity in finding a solution here for this to be developed, but I just don't think this is the solution for revitalizing 38th Avenue and Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thomas Slattery, S-L-A-T-T-E-R-Y, 6869 West 32nd Avenue. I think this proposal is a very new and a very bad precedent for this council to set. In the past, TIF has always been limited to commercial property, and I'll have more to say on that, but first, I would like to review the exact fiscal impact of this proposal. This is based on $467,000 rebate over 20 years, and I have used the current mill levy of the county for residential property in this city. So let's start with the school district. Our mill levy is 50.62 mils. It constitutes 59.2% of the amount of money proposed for this rebate. This comes to $276,464. The second impact is to the county, 24.35 mils, 28.48% of this proposal. This comes to $133,000. The third is the fire district. Maybe it doesn't apply to them, but if it doesn't apply to the fire district, the others will have to pick up the slack. Based on seven and a half mils, 8.77% of the total amount, the fire district's amount would be $40,956. Now we come to the city of Wheat Ridge. 1.83 mils, note this, 1.83 mils, 2.14% of the total. The huge impact to the city of Wheat Ridge comes down to $9,994. Now, it's great to spend other people's money, really great. I'd also like to note that residential construction has the biggest impact on the school district. So why rebate taxes to facilities that are impacting the school district? The same goes for the county. There are numerous, numerous county services that are provided in this city and throughout the county. And again, the county's asked to take this huge, this huge blow to its income. As I say, TIF has always been restricted to commercial developments, those that directly provide revenue to the city. Residential development provides nothing directly. Historically, development has had to pay its own way. I'm reminded of the story that the Woolworth brothers paid cash for their skyscraper in New York. I don't know of any record where they got any subsidy whatever. So I do not think that TIF should be expanded to residential development, and rather, I really think the whole process should be reduced. I think you should only have TIF for something that is large and really proves an advantage to the city, such as the Wheat Ridge Town Center. That has proven itself. So I really request that you reject this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Please spell your last name for the record.
Grant, G-R-A-N-T, Elizabeth. I don't have the facts and figures that Nancy Snow, or Mr. Slattery, or the others had, but I've been listening, the same as you've been listening, and I came tonight to ask you to vote against this. And I had the same reasons in mind, but I didn't have the figures, I wasn't equipped with, I felt that the math was murky and the figures were hazy, and I don't think they have this nailed down. And I think the reason that it's not nailed down is the market, and I don't think the market is prepared for what they're proposing. And I agree with him that these may very well turn into rentals, and I know we've got a lot of problems with some of our rentals in Wheat Ridge, with the police having to visit them all the time, and high crime, and we don't want that kind of thing. We don't want to invite something that looks good and then turns out to be something that's not a good idea. not a good idea. As far as the TIF goes, I'm totally on board with them as far as not allowing $467,000 over 20 years to be a deficit for the city of Wheat Ridge. I don't think it's fair to the schools. I don't think it's fair to the other entities that would otherwise be having more tax revenues given to them for their improvements. I think that he should wait. I think they spoke of three options, and I think he should wait till the market improves or until he gets what he wants from some other means. And I'm hoping that you will take all this into consideration tonight, that you've heard from all of these speakers and from myself. Thank you.
My name's Brian Hancock, H.A.N.C.O.C.K. I represent a small group of investors that wish to remain anonymous at this point, but would like to state just simply that they feel this would be a real bargain for them, so they're pro this resolution.
Gillespie, G.I.L.L.E.S.P.I.E., 3880 Uplum Street, representing Wheat Ridge Fire Department, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As with anybody else in the community, we support anything that speaks to redevelopment, revitalization, and beautification of our city. However, the application in the current form, as presented to us by Mr. Art and discussed at length by our Board of Directors, they've provided staff with the direction to request, in the wisdom of the City Council, that you deny the application if it results in loss of tax revenue for the fire district. One, as with everybody else, we need the money to operate and plug into certain areas within our line item to support our mission and support the community in the many ways that we do. And two, of equal and greater concern possibly is the setting of precedence. As you've been aware, and it's been correctly stated before, this type of request has never been applied to residential, and we're concerned, where does it stop and what is the short and long-term ramifications it has to the district? So in its current form, as presented, the Board of Directors does not support any loss of revenue to the fire district, and I will only speak to the fire district because I have not had any conversations with the other entities and understand their position. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else speaking or public? Oh, I didn't see it back there.
Thank you. Kim Calomino, C.A.L.O.M.I.N.O., 4070 Dover Street. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, for the opportunity. I guess, unlike what you've heard from my fellow citizens, I'm here with a sense of excitement. We are at the place that you've been working for, for so long, beginning in 2005 with NRS and the many initiatives that you've enacted since that time, to great result, step by step by step. You have brought us to a tipping point, and I urge you to tip forward, not backward. I don't even know where to begin to address all the things that I heard, but in terms of loss of tax revenue, vacant land generates almost nothing, as you know, from a property tax perspective. And what it generates now would not be lost. That would continue to be generated and given to the various taxing districts that it's given to now. So there wouldn't be a loss. Tax revenue will be generated by new residents spending at our local businesses, our restaurants, buying their groceries here, living locally. That is sales tax revenue that would be generated. Rooftops bring retail. You will have stimulated new retail in your community. So you will see more property improvements. You're going to have increased property tax from those improvements and increased sales tax revenue from new businesses coming. This is the generator that you've waited for. This is the evidence that we should all be grateful for, to see. I have known Gene, where'd he go? There he is! I've known Gene for a very long time. I can tell you, there is no more respected builder, local builder, Denver builder than Gene Myers in Newtown Builders. The quality of product that he brings, the thoughtful approach he brings, the commitment he brings to a community is something that we should be incredibly proud to have at our doorstep and not tip backwards away from it. Lean in, lean forward, take this opportunity, please. This is what you've worked for, this is what we all want to see. I encourage you to pass this resolution. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public before we move on? Please step forward. Okay, we'll move on to council questions and discussion. Ms. Langworthy?
Okay. So one of my questions kind of addresses about that, the rental, the concern for rental. And I think this might actually be more of a developer question than landowner question because Newtown has done sites previously, correct, where you're, so this question's for you. Sorry. You're both potentially going to be asked, but different questions. So on your previous sites that you've built, what is a, because you build those as owner-occupied, with the intent to owner-occupy, do you have any idea what your rental rate, I mean, over time, have those gone to rental or do they stay primarily owner-occupied?
The vast majority remain owner-occupied. And I can give you, Kevin Puccio from Newtown is here as well, and we were whispering back there, so we built probably 100 or so of these in the Stapleton development. We think on the high side, an estimate would be that 15% of those ended up in the hands of investors, more like 10 more likely. So if we were to apply that to the 26 units that are being proposed here, two or three would end up in the hands of investors if that trend continues. I'm really sensitive to the issue, and, you know, we're sensitive to it as well because we like our neighborhoods to be occupied by owners who have a pride of ownership. The challenge we've run into in the past when we, if you try to artificially restrict that, is you restrict the hand of someone who, when they need to move, who can they sell to? Will the mortgage company give them a mortgage if the potential resale is restricted? It gets very sticky to put requirements on it, and I think it would be very difficult, if not impossible, for us to agree to that. But I would tell you that we don't come into a development like this to sell to investors, and we have not had that track record in the past.
Thank you. And then I do have a question for the owner, the landowner. So we're reading through this, and the numbers are kind of, we understand about 450 is what the land value is to develop, and the 650 is your land value. When I'm reading what I'm not really sure and clear about, is that 650,000, is that your basis in the land or is that the county assessed value of the land?
Now, that number, I'm glad you asked that question because I can probably clear a little bit of it up. That number was my estimate of what the land is worth. The number that Grun and Grun came up with, they basically worked backwards from saying, "Well, if we assume that the builder can only pay this much for the lots and it costs this much to finish the lots, this is what the land is worth." I commend, one of the speakers that was here earlier, speaking on the public comment, took the time to read through that Grun and Grun report because I imagine a lot of people don't. And I think where the concern is and the confusion in the report is that what they call the reservation price of 650 versus what they think is worth 447. And I think we got clarity on that in the Urban Renewal meeting a couple weeks ago, where the Grun and Grun folks said that the, essentially, they're saying that the price I'm putting on the land is high. They only think it's worth 450, and I'm asking 650. At the same time, the internal rate of return, the return on the project that I'm looking for on their report is 12%, they say the market is 20%. So typically, they would expect a developer to say they want a 20% return. So I went back and redid the math and said, "Okay, well, let's take Grun and Grun's numbers, the independent third party that you guys hired." And they said that the market rate should be a 20% return for developer, and my land is worth $447,000. It works out almost exactly the same, the TIF amount that we've agreed to in principle is exactly what I would need to hit that return. So we can look at it either way, but we feel very comfortable that our math is right on that.
So the 450 would give the developer the internal rate of return of 20%, but not you?
It would give me, as the lot developer.
As a lot developer. Because I just, I mean, I did read the report, and on page 10, it shows a 12% internal rate of return at the 450,000 level. So at the 450,000 level, it gives, a 12% rate of return to you or to the developer?
To me, as the lot developer.
To you, as the land, but not the person putting the buildings up?
Correct.
Okay. That's what I'm trying to, because the 20%, you know, they're too, I see, but I'm trying to clarify because these are a bunch of numbers, and if you don't understand where they sit, it can get confusing. So the 450 gives you a 12% return, IRR, internal rate of return, and then the PIF or the TIF, the property, would bring you up to that 20%?
That is correct. I think it's 18%.
18%. Where would the developer of the property, because, I mean, I'm not sure that I see in here where their internal rate of return is in this, but you mentioned it, so that's why I want to clarify.
Yes, I think how, what Grun and Grun did is they looked at Newtown's pro forma and said how much they think they can build this for and what type of profit they expect, and is that profit in the range and norm of what a normal home builder would expect? And I think that number's in the report, but they said, "Yeah, that's reasonable." So.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Davis?
I actually, I'm excited about this project. I do think it's nice to have a reputable builder interested in properties. I was quickly trying to get a mortgage calculator on my iPad to see the rent. If it was a rental property, I don't know many people with a 250,000 mortgage, you could turn around and rent that in Wheat Ridge and call it an investment because I know right now Wheat Ridge doesn't have that type of square foot rental rate in the city. So I struggle with that. I think most importantly, as a member of Urban Renewal, is what I want to emphasize is that the risk is really with the builders and the property owners. We're only committing a dollar amount if the project is successful and the property is built and sold. The good news is, is that empty lot, as Mrs. Calomino had said, that empty lot is going to be increasing in value and not sitting there for 10 years, as we all talk about how it used to be a gas station. 20 years from now, I don't want to be talking about the same thing. So I believe that there's an investment initially from the city, which is going to, the monies is not 100% going to the property owners. It also is also going back into Urban Renewal, which is also going to help in other areas of our city that is considered blighted. And so I do feel that that money that actually is not being given to the schools and the fire district at this point, they're not getting the amount of money that they could in 20 years if we improve the property value. So I do think that this is a long-term solution. I do know that there have been discussions that we're willing to work with the fire departments on some of their services, if that's what they need. But I do think that we have to remember that it's money that they're not these districts. I know there was numbers being put out as far as the 463,000 over this next year, and who would not be getting that money now. Well, they're not getting it now anyway, so it's not as if we're taking it away from them. So I just want to, in general, say that I'm excited about the project. I think it's nice to have a reputable builder. I do think it would be difficult to rent a newly 250,000 mortgage site in Wheat Ridge. I do believe that they would be homeowners, and I'm excited to see it happen.
Thank you. I do think if you had renters paying the rent to support that type, it'd be the type of renter you'd like to have.
Right, exactly. I was trying to figure it out of what the rent would be, but I'm guessing, I don't know, I still got to figure it out. I'll keep you posted.
And I do believe, six or 12 months ago, we started looking at this, and the rental market was very hot, and my initial thought was, "I should build apartments there." And I believe that the zoning that's in place now allows for apartments and multifamily. But we didn't come with an apartment project because that's not what we want to do. We want to do a single-family home project or a townhome project. So you're not taking a risk on letting someone backdoor and get rental units in on a piece of property where they couldn't already, because I believe it's actually zoned for apartments, but that's not our interest at all, so.
I have just one more question. It might be for the builder. So in the Stapleton projects and some of those other projects now, are there association type of bylaws and rules that would also assist in the management of this property as far as, I know I've previously lived in a townhome association, and there are certain rules as far as the upkeep of the property to also assist in any concerns there?
Yes, all of our developments have a homeowners' association where exterior maintenance is included as part of the dues.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Jay?
Like Councilmember Davis, I'm excited about this project. I think it's an opportunity for our city. This is, as I think Ms. Calomino put it, we're turning a corner here, and I think we need to turn it. This land, of course, this vacant land would not be producing the very income that we're talking about here and worrying about giving it away. Well, right now, we don't have any income. And in a recent discussion that I had with Tyler Downs, who was part of Weston Solutions, that an 18 to 20% figure is what is needed to make these kinds of projects go. And when I think about that, there's a lot of risk involved, and I'm okay with that. And I also think about the fact that, the fact that we have these heightened density restrictions are what is hurting us so much. Here's another opportunity or way we have to walk around it in order to get the kind of development that we've been talking about, where you're looking at young professionals, the kind of people that do have the ability to visit our restaurants and add to our stores. We're bringing up our whole area, so I really am feeling pretty positive about this. Thank you for bringing it to us.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with most of the comments, but, you know, there's two ways of looking at a TIF. You know, Ms. Davis said that they do, they're not getting the increment now, so they're not really losing anything. They're also not providing anything. So the idea that they are losing something is that vacant land rarely has a call for help by the fire department, rarely has a call for help from Health and Human Services, rarely has help calls for the school. There's not really anybody living there that's going to the school. So, you know, in my mind, yes, they're losing something. They're losing a great deal. You know, I don't like the idea of a TIF to begin with, but, you know, I can say that if you're talking about a 476, a TIF would be used in a case, to me, that it would benefit the city in the long run. The benefit to the city is so far off on this one, it's, I can't even fathom the amount of money. $476,000 over 20 years, in order to produce the 3% sales tax that we collect, that's over $15 million that would need to be spent in the city. At 26 units, that means that each of those units would have to spend At twenty-six units, that means that each of those units would have to spend five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, nine hundred and twen- five hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars. Each of those units would have to spend that much to produce the three percent to make up that four hundred and seventy-six thousand. You know, I, to address Mr. Peck's question, are we setting a precedent? Possibly. I mean, we, we're possibly setting a precedent for developments to come. Um, we have larger uh, developments. We have developments without heightened density restrictions in the TOD sites and along Wadsworth Corridor. That could be substantially larger um, projects with substantially larger price tags. Currently, along the light rail, um, where we have room to build, in the Arvada area, right by my house by the light rail station, they're building a thousand units of apartments up there. With, using tax increment financing. And uh, you know, the amount of money there, I don't know the exact dollar amount. It's, it's more than this, but. You know, I just, I, I think back to where, you know, where this money is coming from is, is from property tax. It's countywide. You know, in, in the realm of their budget, it may not seem like a lot, but when you do a, a project like this ten or fifteen times over ten years, it starts to add up for everybody. Last year, the schools and the school board came here in this room and asked us to support a resolution for a property tax increase and a mill levy override. And five of us on this dais supported raising taxes because they believed and they argued that there is truly a shortage in the school system. And I believe that projects like this are the reason there is a shortage of funds in the school systems. And that reflects on all of us. It just comes piling down on us when it comes time to tax increases. So, my question would be, you know, I would hope you would think about, you, you, can you support a tax increase in the schools? And at the same time, support taking money from the schools? I don't, I don't see that correlation, so that's a question that I would hope you would ask yourselves.
Anybody else from City Council? Mr. Stites?
Thank you, Joey. You know, I love fa- facts and figures and that was, that was very good. Because it goes to show you just how much they would have to spend to make up a lot of this back. And I, I, I've said it before and I'll say it again, I don't think the city of Wheat Ridge is in business to provide profit for developers. Now, either the project works or the project doesn't work. The second thing is, we have never given a TIF or any type of program like that to a residential project. I understand we need to be flexible, but boy, we're opening up one heck of a can of worms here. Because anybody, you do that for them, anybody that wants to come in and put an addition on their house to increase their square footage, anybody who wants to buy a new house because they're on a vacant piece of land, my lord, uh, it scares me to death because we could be, ooh, from here on in, losing money. And that's not, we're not in the business to make money by any means, but we're sure, gotta be better stewards of that. The problem that has down there in that area, you look at all those apartments that are down there, at one time, they were all senior housing. Then I think they sold and then I think they brought in families. They've had, uh, it has, I've, I hear from a lot of the neighbors down there, a lot of complaints because of the people that are in those apartments, since they opened that up. Before, it wasn't. Now, that's gonna be a problem that you got down there too. You're gonna build these townhomes next to all those apartments down there. And I don't know what that's gonna do to the property value, but I'm sure it's not gonna be too good. Because of that reason, I think we need assurance that, I, I would go as far as say a hundred percent of these have to be owner occupied. Because I don't think we can take a chance in that area that they're not gonna be in. I don't think if, if you're trying to, which we are, and there's nobody that is for revitalization more than me on Thirty-Eighth Avenue. But we gotta have some assurances down there that it's not gonna, that whole area is not gonna become one big apartment. And uh, quite frankly, it'll look like crap down there in the next five years or whatever.
Yeah, I guess, uh, do you want me to address, you know?
No, because I'm talking. It concerns me too that a lot of stuff that has come in, economic, on the development side or tied to TIFs or some type of program. Uh, I wish we could at a certain time, get a project in here that won't cost us money over the long run. I see a pattern there and that concerns me. But this does concern me down there. We are not in the business to provide profit for developers, I don't think. I think we are gonna open up a big can of worms by doing this because we've never done this for a residential project. And that, I can tell, that really concerns me because we do it commercially and boy, they're starting to line up for that. But I cannot and will not support this for those reasons. Now, you can talk.
I think on the, unfortunately, on the, the chance of these turning into uh, rental units, there's really not much that we can, we can offer you in that, uh, for no other reason than people can't get a home mortgage. They can't buy these things if there's a deed restriction on there that says they can't be rented out. It's, it's just not practical. I, I would take the opposite approach is if I've got crappy rental units and I've got a problem there, what I would want is I would want somebody who's willing to come in and spend five million dollars developing three hundred thousand dollar townhomes to try to turn that part of the neighborhood around. I would be looking, I would just look at it in a complete opposite direction. But I think when we talk about the, you know, precedents, that's, that's up to you guys, obviously. You know, you're gonna have other people come ask for something and it's, well, they're not, you've got the willpower to say no. I, I, I can't put it any other way than that. In terms of uh, sales tax loss, you know, we've, we've had opportunities over the past couple of years, uh, to, to develop retail on there. It was a Dollar Store or a Dollar General or a Family Dollar. I don't think that's the direction and the vision that I've heard from the city and what the city wants. What the city wants is to revitalize that, get strong households in there, and this is the spark that gets it done. I, I just can't emphasize enough that this is just, this is just tailor-made for everything I've heard from the city, what the city wants to have happen there.
Any other questions or comments before we take a motion? Mr. Starker, motions in order?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt a resolution number twelve dash two thousand thirteen, a resolution approving a fourth modification to the Thirty-Eighth Avenue Corridor redevelopment plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stites?
I'd like to add an amendment that the uh, fire department, that the fire department gets one hundred percent of the revenue that they would normally get without any TIF.
Is there a second?
So, I, I guess I just need to understand better of what we're, um,
All right, so we have a motion to amend which says that the uh, fire department would get a hundred percent of the tax increments, seconded by Mr. Demott. You have a question?
So, yeah, I'm sorry. I, I have a question as far as, um, this resolution is for the approving of the modification of the Thirty-Eighth Avenue. So is it a recommendation that it, that goes to urban renewal? That is what we're seconding or that we're suggesting? Uh, I think the motion is just on the modification of the Thirty-Eighth Avenue Corridor redevelopment plan.
Mr. Dahl, how would you interpret that, as direction or final?
I, I can answer that. It, it's, it's a modification to Thirty-Eighth Avenue Plan to allow for tax increment financing for this project. And so council could put a, a restriction on.
Can?
Yeah, can, if you'd wanna um, rebate a portion to the taxing district.
Okay, so the amendment is to allow a hundred percent tax increment financing to go back to the fire department, was seconded by Mr. Demott. Discussion on the amendment? Mr. Demott?
Just a, a question, I guess, so that, that it would be uh, renewal Wheat Ridge responsibility to negotiate that and, and um, determine where those funds are coming, coming from?
Is that correct, Mr.?
Correct.
Any other questions or comments on the amendment? Please poll the council on the amendment?
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion carries six zero with Ms. Ms. Jay voting.
Oh, seven.
Six zero. Six one, with Ms. Jay voting no, I'm sorry.
So the amendment passed six to one to allow the fire department to retain their tax increment as the project that goes forward. Any other amendments? Please poll the council on the main motion as amended?
Motion carries five to two with Councilmember Stites and Demott voting no.
Thank you. We're gonna take a ten-minute break. We'll be back at nine. We're gonna go ahead and reconvene, and we'll move on to item number six. Ms. Jay? Sorry.
Yes. Item number six, motion to approve award of RFB 13-12 for purchase of 38th Avenue Banner poles to Wesco Distribution Denver Colorado in the contract amount of $36,580. At issue, city staff is preparing the next incremental improvements as part of implementing the 38th Avenue Corridor Plan adopted by City Council in October 2011. 38th Avenue Improvements Project for 2013 consists of banner poles, installation, roadway striping, and landscape enhancement. Banner poles are being purchased at this time because of the long lead time required for fabrication and delivery, 12 to 14 weeks. Contractor will be selected for installation of the poles within the next 60 days. Through procurement, the city received a bid which then was evaluated and affirmed was selected to provide these poles. Wesco Distribution was selected to furnish four banner poles at a cost of $36,580. Should I read the motion?
Sure, motion's in order.
I move to approve the award for RFB 13-12 for purchase of 38th Avenue Banner poles to Wesco Distribution Denver Colorado in the contract amount of $36,580.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion to approve item number six was seconded by Mr. Reinhardt. Please poll the council.
Motion carries six to two.
No, go ahead and re-clear. Please revote.
I did clear it. You heard me. Okay. Oh, we have the same. Mike, it is the same.
Revote please on item six.
I thought it was deja vu, huh? Motion carries six to two with Councilmembers Demott and Stites voting no.
Now, thank you. Item number seven, Mr. Pond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve the annual support and licensing renewal for the Cartograph System in the amount of $43,653 to Cartograph Inc. The proposed annual renewal of licensing and support for the existing Cartograph Program and the associated modules are necessary to maintain the software for the city. The annual renewal of licensing and support will cost $43,653, which was approved in the 2013 IT budget. This package is all-inclusive for licensing and technical support services. It includes software upgrades and bug fixes and patches, plus technical support to implement those software enhancements and fixes. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve the annual support and licensing renewal for the Cartograph System to Cartograph Inc. in the amount of $43,653.
We have a motion to approve item number seven. It was seconded by Mr. Demott. Discussion on item seven? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Item eight, Councilmember Langworthy?
Thank you, Mayor. A motion to approve the purchase of the 2013 vehicle replacements and accessory equipment in an amount not to exceed $167,361. At issue, as staff recommends, the purchase of the following vehicles under the state of Colorado price agreements. One 2013 Dodge Durango all-wheel-drive SUV at $26,669. One large 2013 Ford F-150 XL 4x4 crew cab pickup at $26,915. One large 2013 Chevrolet 1500 cargo van at $17,510. One large 2013 Ford F-150 4x4 extended cab pickup at $22,766. One large Chevrolet Silverado 2500 4x4 extended cab pickup with plow package at $28,195. And one 2013 Chevrolet Silverado 3500 4x4 cab and chassis with dump bed body package at $31,306 for a total cost of $153,361. Staff also requests approval to purchase, install, and/or relocate auxiliary equipment required for the operation of the replacement vehicles, along with the installation of lightings, markings, and communication equipment at a total cost of $14,000. The total expense of the vehicles, including preparation for use, is not to exceed $167,361. Motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve the purchase of the 2013 vehicle replacements and accessory equipment for a total cost of $153,361. I further move to approve the expenditure of the not-to-exceed amount of $14,000 for the purchase, installation, and/or relocation of auxiliary equipment for the operation of the vehicles, along with the installation of markings and a communication equipment.
Is there a second? We have a motion to approve item number eight. It was seconded by Ms. Jay. Mr. Stites?
You know, I'm gonna stick to my guns on this. Regardless of the fleet management and this and that, I just don't think at this particular time that we need to be buying $167,000 worth of vehicles, because I think we're gonna have some costs or some other things kick in here pretty soon. So that's my story, and I'm sticking with it. I just don't think at this time the city needs to spend that kind of money on replacing vehicles.
Any questions or comments? Please poll the council.
Motion carries six to two with Councilmembers Demott and Stites voting no.
Thank you. That concludes our agenda for this evening. Move on to City Managers Matters?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to announce that the city's about ready to hold another civic academy for our citizens. The goal of the program is to introduce Wheat Ridge citizens to the city's organization, how it works, and how it impacts your neighborhood. This year's focus is going to be on the results that city departments are working on to achieve, and how these efforts affect the community and how residents can be evolved. We would encourage anybody that's interested to check out the city's website, or they can call Nate Mosely at (235) 2867. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorneys Matters?
You've got an executive session motion that I'd like you to take after you've done Executive Officials Matters, but other than that, nothing.
And we'll stay in here tonight?
Yeah, that's fine.
We'll stay in here, council, when the motion is made for the executive session. We'll just stay up here. So we might have to go back in that room, be a little bit quicker. City Clerks Matters?
Yes, I just had one informational note. I was remiss, and I should have announced it at the last meeting, and that is that many of you might know longtime former resident of Wheat Ridge Ruth Howard, she passed away about three weeks ago, I think, something like that. And she and her husband, Bob, had moved to North Carolina? South Carolina? I'm sorry, I don't remember which of the Carolinas. Anyway, she passed away, and she, a lot of residents will probably remember her. She longtime involved in the city, and she starred and carried on the youth probation program that we have with our court for 30-some years, probably. And the program no longer exists, and she helped guide a lot of young kids through difficult times in their youth. And then, and her husband, Bob, served on the Board of Adjustments forever and ever. So they're longtime residents, and I believe that she's buried in whichever Carolina it is. But there's going to be a memorial service here in Wheat Ridge for her, I believe sometime in April. So if you knew Ruth and would like to attend that, kind of watch for that announcement. That's all.
Thank you. I just had one quick announcement. I wanted to let Davis know and a few other councilmembers that I met today with John Zabawa for lunch and from the Senior Resource Center, and he would like to be on the study session in May for a couple of reasons. One is to discuss the senior circulator bus. That's coming due. We had funded that senior circulator bus for a couple of years with CDBG money, and that's coming up, I believe, at the end of 2013 for the funding of that. That covers about 100 seniors throughout the community on a route. And then the other thing was, they're getting ready for their Phase II development at their property, and they wanted to talk to the city council about waiving the use fees and the permit fees, and they calculate right now that that cost will be about $20,000. In the past, we've done it before on their Phase I. So I had talked to Patrick, and he was supposed to contact Mr. Reinhardt, but I think we were looking at May 6th. That's okay with you guys, with council?
I just needed a chance to review the other issues.
But he will bring in the backup material, and I'll have some backup material, too. So the two issues is the senior circulator bus, funding for 2014 on, I believe, and also the permits and use tax on their Phase I enhancements to their building. Mr. Stark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to thank all of the citizens who came to last Friday's District One meeting at the old firehouse. We had about, I would estimate, 50 citizens that showed up. We had some good information. We had some lively exchanges, and I think that's a way that we build community. So I'd like to thank everybody for attending that. We will have also another, we have a District One and Two meeting that I'm sure someone is going to mention on their notes, and we'll have another District One meeting in June, I believe. So thank you for coming, and hope to see you again.
Thank you. Mr. Stites?
Yeah, Wheat Ridge lost another great person here this last week, and George Putnik. And our thoughts and prayers go out to his family. George was on the Fire Board and the Sewer Commission, and just a great fella, an all-around volunteer, and he will be missed. So our prayers go out to his family. It would be a great time to relocate either your home or business to Wheat Ridge. We got a lot of incentives. So if you need any help, ask one of us or staff. Positive thing, this last snowstorm, I saw a ton of people helping each other out, and I think that was great. And as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
Not a lot tonight, just to follow up again to, oops, just, oops, just to follow up to our District One and Two meeting, which is April 29th, and there should be some postcards going out a couple of weeks before that. We planned for it to be at 6:30. Was it six? No, 6 o'clock. 6 to 7:30, and it's here in the council chambers. So we're looking forward to seeing everyone there. A postcard will go out with the agenda, and it's also posted on the website, and just wanted to wish everybody a happy Easter.
Thank you. Ms. Langworthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to mention that many of us attended the Industry Appreciation Awards for the Jefferson County Economic Development Council, and two of our businesses in Wheat Ridge were recognized. Able Planet and the Rocky Mountain Bottling Corporation were recognized. And it's just, it's good to see our businesses doing great things in our city, and Able Planet, looks like it's gonna have a very large expansion coming up. They've gotten, they do hearing aids, but they also do headphones, and so look for a lot of growth in our community with new employees.
Thank you. Mr. Pond?
Thank you. I just want to make one last announcement for the final of three Food and Film Gatherings that are supported by Live Local Wheat Ridge and Live Local Harvest. It'll be at the Wheat Ridge Act of Adults Center this Wednesday night, starting, I think at 6:30 for food. And the movie is Urban Roots. So again, a chance to talk about urban agriculture in our community, and there's been fantastic attendance at the first two. I hope to see you at the last.
Thank you. Ms. Jay?
My fellow councilmen have covered it very well, and I'll just say happy Easter and good night.
Mr. Demott?
I just want to wish everybody a happy and peaceful Easter, and also like to welcome new business to Wheat Ridge and 44th Avenue. Tommy's Slalom Shop is moving in in 44th Avenue Industrial Park across from Mount Olivet, west of the highway. They will be having a grand opening on April 6th, starting at 10:30 in the morning. They're gonna have live music, food, drinks, entertainment, and somehow they're having a wave pool and wakeboard and water skiing exhibitions. And I don't know how they're gonna do it, so I suggest you get down and see how they're gonna do it, because it should be pretty interesting.
That's actually two days, April 5th and 6th.
5th and 6th.
All weekend, yep.
Friday and Saturday, right? Oh, I was close. I'm just excited about the wave pools.
Thank you. Mr. Reinhardt?
I just want to echo Councilman Starker's comments with respect to the district meeting in District One. It was great to see so many people out there, a lot of opinions, but real positive discussions. So thanks. I just want to echo that.
Thanks. We're adjourned, and we'll stay here for the executive session. Oh, we have to make a motion. Mr. Stites?
I move to go into executive session for a conference with the city attorney and appropriate city staff under Charter Section 5.7b1 and Section 2464024B CRS specifically for legal advice regarding regulation of massage parlors and massage therapists. I further move to adjourn the council meeting at the conclusion of the executive session.
Second?
We have a motion to go into executive session. It was seconded by Mr. Starker. Please poll the council. Thank you.